Hello, Loveland. I'm Mike Melden and this is your Loveland Weekly Podcast, brought to you by Gina Dubell Smith, EXP Realty, and Stone Pillar Farm. Welcome to today's double interview where we discuss the controversial and hotly debated group Moms for Liberty, which is often abbreviated as M4L. Labeled as extremist by the Southern Poverty Law Center, this organization has made waves across the country by infiltrating school boards and is gearing up for a significant presence in the upcoming school board elections here in Greater Cincinnati on November 7th. While they claim to champion parents' rights, it's crucial to look beyond the surface as their agenda extends far beyond that, seeking to reshape the landscape of public education as we know it. In the first interview, we will hear my conversation with Natalie Hastings, a PR consultant and a dedicated mother who's been closely monitoring public education and the rise of Moms for Liberty. She brings a unique perspective on the organization and its influence on the education landscape. Following Natalie, we will hear from Ryan Kulik. Many of you may recognize his name and voice from his popular local podcast, Eye on Loveland, which garnered significant attention until its recent conclusion. Admittedly, I usually didn't agree with the content of his shows, often listening just to fuel my own convictions and stir up some healthy agitation. However, beneath our differences in local politics, I suspected that we shared common ground on many broader issues. So a few months ago, I reached out to Ryan for a beer, and it turns out my hunch was right. We found more commonalities than disparities. Ryan is a seasoned political communicator who has worked with various organizations and campaigns throughout his career. He'll shed some more light on the broader political context and dynamics that surround Moms for Liberty. It was a pleasure speaking with both Natalie and Ryan. I only wish that I had included our entire conversations rather than having to cut them for time. But I digress. Let's dig in and get ready to gain a deeper understanding of Moms for Liberty, their goals, and their influence in today's education and political world. Today is Monday, October 30th, 2023.
I started paying a lot more attention to public education when I had kids, as most of us do. And I've seen both sides. I actually had my kids in private school for a few years. Early on in their academic careers, they both have diagnoses. And so I can see, you know, some of the reasons why people at times choose private schools. But ultimately, I brought my kids back to our public school because I appreciated the additional oversight that they have and accountability to the citizens and accountability to all the state licensure and regulations and those sorts of things. And specifically, anti-bullying policies was one of the things that drew us back into Forest Hills, which is where my kids attend. I started tracking misinformation sometime in the mid 2010s. I had worked at the Freedom Center, and there was a lot of misinformation about what human trafficking was. And so I think that's probably when I really started to get interested in it. And then, as we know with the rise of Twitter and everything, and how stories can get amplified on social media. I've just been, it's something that I track sort of, hobby is a really weird and lame word, but I know that it matters. And so I've tracked it for a while and of course, became more interested as there was more anti-government fervor around the time of the 2020 election and COVID mask mandates and that sort of thing. In the summer of 2021, my district started to have a lot of noise around critical race theory CRT, which of course, isn't taught today and wasn't then in our school district. But it's hard to prove a false negative. So, and now looking back, I can put some pieces together that it was primarily, it appeared to be people that are organized in the Tea Party in this area. And they had done a lot of posting around this StopCriticalRaceTheory.com. And, you know, so a lot of the people didn't even attend Forest Hills. Of course, there were some, but so we had people from Claremont. We had people from the West Side that were coming to protest our school board meetings about our supposed CRT. And that's when I really started paying attention. Honestly, up till that point, I hadn't followed our school board closely. And in fact, years ago, I've not even supported every levy. It's not like I've been this monolithic, you know, I want to understand it and do what I think is best. For the record, it was not about the levy so much as the administration at the time. But anyway, so that's when I really started tracking these things. And I guess you could say one of the pivotal moments, tipping point maybe, for me was when my son's high school had Diversity Day canceled in March of 2022. My son wasn't old enough to participate yet in the original format, which was just for juniors and seniors. But he had the teacher in homeroom, and so he was aware of it and excited about it. And he came to me to say, Mom, like, one of the school board members who is part of Moms for Liberty, her daughter needed to get her permission slip signed. And around that time, not, you know, short time later, suddenly the event was postponed.
And you, did you hear of Moms for Liberty at that point? Or is that the first time you'd heard of it?
I, I didn't know at that point that she was involved with Moms for Liberty. I had associated the new members of my school board, who come more from one particular point of view as being involved with Ohio Value Voters, which is, was originally out of Northeast Ohio. So there was an article in Fox News shortly after our board was elected that referred to them as being supported by Ohio Value Voters. And so I don't remember exactly when I knew that they were officially part of Moms for Liberty, but I knew that they were members of the Facebook group sometime after that. But for me at that point, it was more about like, I was still figuring out what maybe motivated them, where their information was coming from, and I wasn't necessarily attaching it to a certain group at that point. However, our board president spoke at the Hamilton County Moms for Liberty as the keynote in August. So, and that's public, it was on their face, you know, it's not a secret that that happened. So it, that's why, one of the reasons why people need to pay attention is that a lot of the Moms for Liberty front-facing content is really innocuous, very patriotic sounding. And the reason that they've succeeded, I believe, where some of the other groups haven't, is because, you know, their founder, Bridget Ziegler, was a PR person. Like she's, you know, she understands the marketing machine, how this works. So in the Greater Cincinnati area, we have several candidates that are specifically endorsed by Moms for Liberty. I'm also going to mention the candidates that are endorsed by Ohio Value Voters, just because that's also really relevant to what's happening today. So Paul Shiley, I may not be saying that right, but he is running in Cincinnati Public Schools. And he is endorsed by Ohio Value Voters and Moms for Liberty. And then in my district, we have one candidate, his name is Ken Kuhn, and he is not endorsed by Moms for Liberty, but he is endorsed by Ohio Value Voters. And also in my district, Forest Hills, Kevin Comerford is endorsed by Moms for Liberty and signed the pledge, the parent pledge, which you've probably seen, and is also endorsed by Ohio Value Voters. In Madeira, Anita Grolmes and Kim Heath are both endorsed by Moms for Liberty and Ohio Value Voters. In Northwest, Christine Coliver is endorsed by Ohio Value Voters, Moms for Liberty, in the 1776 Project PAC, which is similar, but not, not many on our list are endorsed by them. Lisa Eibold, who is in Oak Hills, is endorsed by both Ohio Value Voters and Moms for Liberty. And then Linda Cecil in Loveland is endorsed by Ohio Value Voters and Moms for Liberty. And that's the ones that we know about. It's really important that everyone educates themselves on the candidates and their values and what aligns with their perspective, and then make sure that you vote. Less than 40% of Forest Hills voters voted in the 2021 school board election, and we're seeing, you know, how that works out. It hasn't, in my opinion, gone very well in that sense. And, you know, you look at Cincinnati Public, and they only have one candidate who is aligned with Moms for Liberty who's running. But we know from Lakota, the difference that just one can make, whether that's Oak Hills, Loveland. You know, it's, it only takes one because of the information that they get access to that they can then leverage for, you know, it's not just about transparency. And oh, well, why wouldn't you want them to know what goes behind closed doors? But often it's, they come at information with a perspective that's informed by rumors, I find, or, you know, just a slanted perspective where they're, they are looking at things where everything is, quote, "the business of education" versus education as a public good that just like Medicare or just like, you know, getting your streets repaved. Yeah, it's, it's not Marxist to expect a basic, you know, quality education for every child. And, but if you are tuned out because you're frustrated with all the hate, or even if you're frustrated because suddenly school board is political, which is perfectly understandable, it's a nonpartisan race, you can't tune out until after November 7th. Because if you don't show up, the noise isn't going to get lower. It will in fact, probably get higher.
And now here's my conversation with Ryan Kulik.
Well, Mike, I, it's going to surprise a lot of people when I say this, but I tend to try to be a private person. And my wife says I'm very introverted, but I would assume a lot of people listening to this know who I am. They're probably a little surprised about what's going on. I'll give you, I'll give you the elevator. We're stuck in an elevator for two minutes and you're asking me what I am, who I am. Yes, I am Ryan Kulik. I live over in Loveland, over on the Hamilton County side, and with my wife, my 13-year-old, and our, our blind dog, who's seven. But, you know, he's, he's, he still seems to figure it out. I guess he went blind early enough. But I, my job is, I tell people I'm a political communicator. I learn, I, I help organizations or candidates, usually through conflict. If they're in a campaign or if they're in something that's very, it's got a lot of noise around it. That's where, where that's where I've been in my career. I started, believe it or not, weirdly trying to help the carnival business in Missouri with a certain, like, yeah, government regulations. And then I moved on to that to work with gun violence prevention groups, which I've worked all over the country. And then when you're fighting the NRA, you gotta, you gotta be tough.
Yeah, not, not many bigger than that.
No, and then I, I moved, I worked with some chronic illness organizations, mainly around embryonic stem cell research. So I tell people, when you go into politics, you're either, you're either looking for power or you're looking for influence. And people will say, if you have power, you do have influence, which you do. I will never run for office. I will never have a vote to enact policy. So my job is influence, and which means I'm not the general, I'm the soldier. I have, I have my tools, I have my weapons, and I'm a soldier in search of a war.
When Moms for Liberty starts popping up in the news and we have the election coming up here, the first guy I reached out to, and I said, hey, how much do you know about Moms for Liberty? And, and Ryan said, I'm your guy.
Yeah.
So tell us about Moms for Liberty.
As the pandemic hit and kids were at home and hearing people upset at teachers for masking and doing all these other things, I'm like, wait a second, what's going on here? And that's when I was introduced to this organization called Moms for Liberty. Now, the little bit that I'm sure many of your listeners know, but Moms for Liberty is fairly new. They were founded in 2021, and they were founded in Florida. Now, I hate to promote this, but one of the shows I do is called High Heels and Politics.
Yeah, great.
And it's, the interesting about that is the woman who hosted, it's about to turn 89. So, but she, she used to, or she still is pretty well-known in the Republican organizations around here. And we would interview people and we would get your governors, county commissioners, stuff like that. And then one day, and I gotta give Mary Ann, I gotta let her off the hook. She did not do this interview, somebody else did, came to me and said, I'm going to do an interview with Tina Deskovich. And I'm like, I don't know who that is. And she goes, she's one of the founders of Moms for Liberty. And you gotta remember, at this time, I'm just dealing with a lot of, I mean, we're not even talking about vaccines at this time. We're talking about anti-masking and parental rights is a word that keeps coming up. And then I did that, and if you go listen to it, it's out there. You go listen to Ms. Deskovich on this podcast, it sounds very normal. Sounds like parents should be involved in the child's education. And we all saw our, what our kids were learning, and we didn't like it, so we wanted to be involved. And I'm not going to lie to you, Mike, I felt like some of the school districts I worked with, I said, you guys didn't take this head-on. You allowed them to make it seem like you guys didn't care.
Right.
And it was, we treated it in a lot of ways like, you guys are crazy, it's going to blow over.
Sure.
Well, it didn't blow over. And as, as the pandemic got deeper, especially as we got into vaccines, I know, I think you say this at the end of your podcast, but anything I say does not express the views of your own sponsors or yourself, because I'm going to say a few things here. It started to evolve into what I call basically a white Christian nationalist group. And you can see that. If, I know people are going to be like, well, this is just a liberal interpretation. I go back to being a soldier. I was in this war, I'm still in this war. And you would start hearing things about, well, teachers are grooming our students to become transgendered or something. And now let's fast forward as we get deep into the pandemic and as this gets a lot worse. There was a Loveland School Board meeting, and this was a lot of people talking about vaccine, how, how good the vaccines are if they're killing people. I'm not going to name names, people will know if they go back. But one of our school board members was sharing, one of the Loveland School Board members, was sharing some information that wasn't exactly correct. And so I decided to poke my head out of my, my persona that I am here and be citizen me. And I remember I walked up there and I said, you know what? At the end of the day, these are the things we know. We know teachers can teach. We know that in the 1919 Spanish Flu pandemic, that masking helped and worked. We know the vaccines are, are going to help cut down on the deaths. And then I said, if you all want to go out there and eat horse paste and think that you're savings people, go ahead and do that, but don't do it to our kids. So I'm like, no, it's time to fight. You gotta fight this, you gotta fight back. And I think since then, when I call them a white Christian nationalist organization, that's me fighting back. You have to call them out. I don't, I don't want anybody to get this straight, one way or the other. They want a, they want an education out there that is going to gloss over every bad thing this country has done. That's what they want. And that's what Moms for Liberty is. And you go, they can say the nicest things in the world, but at the end of the day, they've branched out. It's not just about curriculum anymore. The Don't Say Gay bill in Florida, that's them. The, the move towards vouchers and stuff in every state, that's them. There is a school board candidate who is endorsed by Moms for Liberty. And I went to the forum that the Loveland, that the Chamber Alliance put on. And she was like, I don't want to ban any books. Yes, you do.
Yeah.
The organization that supports you, they do. But I want to pivot to the thing that I think, I want everybody out there to know more than anything, is your child's education is very personal. And we all have a choice in how we want to do that child's education. And when they talk about parental rights and stuff like that, if we are putting our kids into the public schools, even if we don't think a lot about it, we're still making the choice of them getting on the bus. Every single day, I'm in the car with my son to and from school, and he doesn't want to talk about school, he's a 13-year-old. I don't know a thing, you know? I'm dumb.
Dad?
But like you said, he's asking me about math, but I still, I want to know about his mental health. I want to know all of this other stuff. And if, if I think something's wrong, I'm going to let an expert take care of it. But at the same time, my wife and I, we have some good friends who, ever since they, they had a little girl, same age as our son, and when she was five or six, I remember we would say, you know, she's very tomboy and she's very this. But it wasn't just being a girl interested in sports. She exhibited behaviors, but again, I'm not a psychologist. And I know my wife's friend talked to her about it, and they took her to a child psychologist. And during that time, her kid said that she felt like she was a boy. And I know my wife's friend sat and they just cried together for the longest time. And it's frightening.
Sure.
It's nothing, nothing you know of before. I, my wife is the daughter of Indian immigrants. When I was born, we could have not gotten married in seven states.
Crazy.
Right, so you think about how society evolves and how things move through. And everybody's like, well, she's got mental problems. She's talking about my friend's daughter. She's got this, she's got this. And it's like, you know what, we don't know. I'm not an expert in this. But an expert did say that she is transgendered. She is a boy. And now every single day, and her kid goes to public school and stuff like that, they have to worry about their son's health every day now, their mental health, their, their issues that they have to go through. And, but you know what, you know what our friends do? They love their son. They will do anything to make their son have a happy life. They don't understand the compassion. And Mike, I'm going to tell you this right now, these are not quote-unquote liberal people. And their son does not go to a school that everybody's going to think is quote-unquote grooming. That's not what these teachers have time for. But they don't, they turn around and they see Moms for Liberty treating their child like an abomination.
Moms for Liberty, you mentioned your opinion. This is your opinion that they're this group, but the Southern Poverty Law Center has labeled them an extremist group. You know, The Hill, which is, you know, publication that is left and right, put out an article. Yeah, it was, it was an opinion piece, but six reasons why they are extremists. People are worried.
They are, and this is, I'm trying not to, to do the whole Dunning Kruger thing to make myself an expert in what it is. I'm just, I'm just talking about the expertise that I have helping organizations craft messages. But at the end of the day, because I've had a lot of people going, you know, why now? What is it? And I said, look, there's an existential dread that we all saw with the pandemic. There was this, this, I think it's the first time a lot of us really kind of grappled with the concept of our mortality, and mortality on a greater scale.
Definitely.
And it's, that, that brings fear. And as we, as we get older, we also have a weird thing going on right now, where something I'm looking at is the issue one in Ohio, the women's health initiatives that are coming up. How are people 65 and older voting? How are people 45 and younger voting? Because those are your two biggest voting blocks. And it's, it's going to be interesting where that split is. Where that 65 and older group is, is a group that is really, they're motivated by two things. They're motivated by fear and victimhood. It's all like, make you afraid of something, and at the end, to make you afraid, you must be the victim. So you have with Moms for Liberty that they talk about, well, my child feels bad when you talk about slavery. You know what, feel bad, it's a terrible thing that happened.
Another thing I want to add to, we are seeing these candidates, they're not coming in with these really strong messages. They're not coming in and getting people fired up. And I read that that's kind of their Trojan horse approach. Have you heard anything like that?
Yeah, I, I believe that. I am going to mention, because the person's in the news and might as well be mentioned, but a member of the Lakota School Board, Darby Boddy. And I was lucky enough to take a meeting with her when she was deciding to run for office. And this is, you know, people can judge me however they want. I usually, like, I do believe everybody should get a place, but I do draw a line and there are some lines. My concern with her was inexperience. And with that inexperience means you're more likely to take a zealot's route. There was, this was the last Loveland School Board election, but I saw one of the candidates get up and go, do you know their budget's $40 million? That's too much money. And I'm like, you just said everything, I need to know that you know nothing. That's like if I said, do you know GE spends a trillion dollars a year? Oh my gosh, what do they do that for?
Right, no context.
Right, exactly. So I'm like, so when you talk about the Trojan horse, that's what it is. They say these things to you, parental rights, the budget's too fat, all this other stuff. To be like, to get the people that aren't as, aren't as informed, sorry, I didn't want to use uneducated, are not as informed, or honestly, don't have the time to do that. And they're like, yeah, that is wrong, yeah, that is big. I think we have, in this community, I think we have had, I've, I've made clear some of my issues going on. But I think, look, we live, we moved here because of Loveland Schools. And that's, we, that's why we did when we moved here with our young, who's still in preschool at the time. But, and I've had great experiences at times we were in Loveland, great experience with them. I felt like the school board at times could have fought back a little bit more. But again, those are my viewpoints. And, but they've been good in this community because I think this community has a very diverse group of people that live here. Whereas if you go out to Lakota, you can grab a certain group of people that already play that victimhood card. It's, you know, we're, poor us, or why aren't we getting this? And now my kid is learning weird math. So with all of that stuff, you have Moms for Liberty takes that fear. And if, if I was advising a candidate and they were with Moms for Liberty and stuff like that, and they went to the forum, I would have told that candidate, say exactly what that candidate said. There's no books I want to ban, there's no curriculum I'm against, because that's this community. This community hasn't fallen down that rabbit hole. You know, Loveland, with whatever good, bad, otherwise that have happened with the, with the Loveland Schools and Loveland School Board, it's still one of the best schools in the region. It still does more with less than, again, I've worked with a lot of these people. Forty million's not enough to do what they're doing. And the education, the world our children are living in and stuff, we have, we have experts that are working on it, and I think people realize that. I want to go back to what I said at the beginning, how there's people that want influence and people that want power. Then people will tell me, but if you want power, you want influence. Not necessarily. Sometimes you want to lead. Sometimes you want to tell those influencers how to use their, their weapons or their skills or stuff like that. Moms for Liberty want power through influence. They're trying to change the conversation in order to change what the power is doing, if that makes sense.
No, it does.
And they do it through potluck dinners, nice little gatherings and things like this. But at the end of the day, and like, you go listen to Ms. Deskovich talk, I had edited it for 30 minutes, and it's like, we're just here to protect our kids, we're here to do this.
The banality of evil.
Exactly. At the end of the day, especially in politics, there's no absolutes. There are, there's darkness everywhere. There, and darkness, that's a bad word. There's, there's people that don't do good things everywhere. And the more we don't call that stuff out, the more we invite things like Moms for Liberty.
Hello, I'm Alyssa Pfeifer, back for another Loveland High School Weekly Update. This week obviously marks a very important week, since it is Halloween. Everyone's pretty excited, not only for the holiday and celebrating, but also for the beginning of November as we progress through the school year. There's not too much going on since it is a week with a holiday. But Friday and Saturday, the Loveland Athletic Boosters have a craft fair at the high school to support the boosters through various arts and crafts. And Saturday, the band has their Midstates Championships. So make sure that you go out and support the athletics and the arts this week in whatever way you can.
In Loveland City News, are you interested in participating in your local community, and in particular, Loveland's local government? The city is looking for residents to volunteer for various committee positions covering a wide range of topics such as tree and environment, parks and rec, arts, and finance. The application deadline is November 30th, 2023. For more information or to apply, please visit LovelandOH.gov/212/Board-Commission. I'll have the link on my website. I'll have the link on my website. We are really fortunate to have a local government that takes in citizen volunteer input at this scale. I had the pleasure of being the chairman of Loveland's Tree and Environment Committee, and I was the secretary of our Park and Rec Board. These were very rewarding experiences in so many ways, and I highly recommend that you give it a shot and apply. I even did a podcast on our committees not too long ago. So for a little bit more information, check that out. Looking ahead in Loveland, Love Our Land has a Calorie Pair Removal at Grailville on November 4th at 9:00 AM. We'll probably go to about noon in our show. All ages welcome, we will have supplies and waivers. Help us get rid of these invasive trees so that we can stop them from spreading all over the tri-state. To RSVP, please go to the website, www.loveourland.org. And for more information on Moms for Liberty, go to our website, We have something truly special here in Loveland. Thank you for listening, and have a great week. This episode was produced and engineered at On Brand Studios and recorded at Grailville, a magical place here locally like no other. Please note that the opinions expressed in the podcast do not necessarily represent the views of our sponsors or organizations.